University.
That's you, VA? Oh, oh.
You're right. I tried to explain just now.
And it's like the ones that.
Really?
I did not like it. Listen.
There it goes.
There you go.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the West Virginia Board of Education for July ninth, two thousand and twenty five. If you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
And please be stupid louder of the United States of America. And to the Republic which has stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our home.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
By Mr. Dunn Levy, seconded by Dr. Stansberry. Any questions, discussions? All in favor, aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is delegations. Ms. Day?
Good morning, President White, Vice President Gabriel, members of the board, and Superintendent Blatt. We have eleven delegations this morning. Start with Mary Ellen Farrell of Charleston uphold. Okay, she's already spoken. All right, so we will have April Eastep, Boone County Federation of Teachers, speak to the issue of the state takeover of Boone County Schools.
Good morning. My name is April Eastep, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Boone County Federation of Teachers. I've been employed in Boone County Schools since two thousand and one, and I'm also a graduate of Boone County Schools, as are my children. Like many of the educators and staff I represent, I care deeply about our school, our schools and the students that we serve. I just wanted to address some findings from the preliminary special circumstances report for Boone County Schools. And I want, I do want to say that we know that the balance scorecard results are not where they need to be. But what I think was overlooked in the preliminary report is that they have been trending up for the last three years, and that we're moving in the right direction. Under focus area one, the findings related to policy eighty-two hundred are labeled as preliminary and incomplete, and I think that that's key. The reviewed purchases go back to two thousand and twenty-one, which was before our, Mr. Riggs was hired as superintendent, and I think, I feel that the full context and timeline was not included in part of that, in that part of the preliminary report. Regarding financial inquiry three under focus area one and outdated policies, Mr. Riggs and the Boone County Board of Education had been actively working to fix those policies from his very first meeting as superintendent. There were policy revisions on the board minutes. I mean, two thousand and twenty-four, the county partnered with Neola to overhaul and update policies more efficiently and to make sure everything was correct. Focus area two, board policies on the website were outdated, but again, that was being addressed. The facilities that were referenced in the report stated that board minutes stated that the board was spending money to maintain facilities that weren't owned by the board. What was left out of that or what facilities were those? Because we have lots of students and sports teams that use county commission-owned facilities. And so my question is, were those facilities owned by the county or the county? I guess done. Can I finish? Or no? I'm sorry, what? Okay, thank you so much.
Our next delegation is Jacob Massey. Topic of discussion is takeover of Boone County Schools. And next up will be Holly Craig after Jacob.
Hello, I'm Jacob Massey. I am a high school math teacher. This is my third year in Boone County. And I'm here today because the recent state, recent state takeover of Boone County Schools has left our community silenced and powerless. Last month, this board voted to remove local authority and appointed a new superintendent, claiming it was in our best interest. But the truth is, we already had the leadership that we wanted until this board took it from us. At the center of this issue is Superintendent Blatt, whose leadership decisions reveal evidence of favoritism. During Jeff Huffman's tenure as superintendent of Boone County, our district experienced two major embezzlement scandals, including one involving three point four million dollars. Yet, after retiring from Boone County, Mr. Huffman was appointed as superintendent of Logan County Schools, another school district taken over by this board in October of two thousand and twenty-two. However, recently on May twenty-third of this year, Superintendent Blatt announced that Mr. Huffman was getting promoted to oversee board-controlled school districts. How does someone with a record like that get rewarded? It's clear that Superintendent Blatt isn't choosing the most qualified leaders. Rather, she's simply choosing the people that she wants around her. That's not leadership, it's nepotism. And it's especially hypocritical, given that the perception of nepotism was cited as one of Boone County's areas of noncompliance. Meanwhile, Matt Riggs and Tony Tullany, the very administrators who uncovered the missing three point four million dollars after Mr. Huffman's departure, they were the ones who were punished. They were unjustly removed while the person responsible for the financial oversight failures was given a promotion. Boone County wants its voice and its leaders back. We reject this takeover and the biased decisions driving it. We demand that the board restore control of our elected officials and end the pattern of insider favoritism. Thank you.
Next up is Holly Craig. Topic of discussion, Boone County Schools, and Matt Riggs and Tony. And on deck is Brenda Isaacs. So Ms. Craig, right here? Okay. We'll move on to Brenda Isaacs. Topic of discussion, thanking the board for their support of maintaining strong West Virginia immunization laws.
Good morning, President White, Superintendent Blatt, board members. I'm representing the West Virginia Association of School Nurses, and we just want to say thank you. Our whole responsibility as school nurses, as well as their passion, is to keep kids healthy and able to learn. And I know that that's what you all are looking at, too. We so much appreciate your support and your understanding of the fact that we have the, one of the strongest school entry immunization laws in the country. And because of that, our kids are healthier than they would be. All of our bordering states have cases of measles right now. And there are other diseases such as pertussis, and we have even in this country seen a couple of cases of polio. We are protecting our children, and it's not just a matter of protecting one person's child, but it's protecting all children. And I know you all understand that. I won't bore you with all the scientific stuff because you've heard it before, and you'll probably hear it again. But I just want to say that the, the school nurses of West Virginia want to thank you for your understanding, and I know it's not always easy, but thank you.
Next up is Anne Bradley. Topic of discussion is vaccine, vaccination requirements.
Good morning. My name is Anne Bradley. I'm a retired lawyer, former lobbyist, mother, grandmother, and I've served on several state boards and commissions, so I can empathize somewhat with some of the experiences you all have had. For some time, I've been following the controversy over mandatory vaccinations of schoolchildren. This has obviously been an issue in West Virginia and other states and at the national level. And I've also seen the multiple efforts that are being made to weaken those requirements despite overwhelming contrary evidence, and this has been disheartening. In contrast, this board's recent action to adhere to the existing statutory requirements in the face of bitter criticism and threats has been inspiring. Public service has been given a bad rap in recent months. People in positions such as yours, who spend significant time in service to the public with little or no compensation, have been vilified for doing the right thing. As you know, there are several lawsuits currently pending in West Virginia that ultimately may decide the issue of the governor's executive order versus the existing statute. But in the meantime, this board's decision is sound. It is sound morally, intellectually, and legally. And there's no reason to take any different action. I thank you all for your service.
Next, we have Judy Hamilton. Topic of discussion is the importance of following West Virginia law to protect our children from preventable diseases with vaccinations.
Good morning. My name is Judy Elizabeth Hamilton. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm an eleventh generation West Virginian, and I have benefited from nineteen years of public West Virginia education. I've been a lawyer for thirty-two years and a mediator, and I respect our laws and our constitution. I want to personally thank you, the very brave members and staff of this Board of Education, for respecting our laws and our constitution by deciding to follow mandatory immunization laws to protect our children from needless suffering and possibly death from preventable diseases. My mom is a retired West Virginia school teacher. As a mom myself, I taught children's Sunday School and was a Girl Scout leader for thirteen years. I know how easily children spread germs. I am grateful every day for West Virginia's strong immunization laws because I grew up knowing that my mom nearly died from measles. knowing that my mom nearly died from measles, and her first cousin got polio and survived, but lived a shortened life with multiple disabilities. My daughter was born very prematurely and has immunocompromised issues. I don't know with certainty that she would have survived to adulthood if she had grown up during a time when childhood vaccinations were not available or respected. As a lawyer, I know you made the right legal decision, too. The governor's executive order isn't worth the paper it's written on. Executive orders that contradict existing law or the Constitution are not legally valid and should be struck down by courts. Thank you for standing up for West Virginia's children, for other vulnerable citizens, and for following our law.
Next up is Sissy Price. Topic of discussion is vaccines.
Good morning. My name is Sissy Price, and I am a co-director of an organization called West Virginia Families for Immunizations. We're a grassroots organization that supports immunizations and the science behind them. I'm here to, one, introduce my organization and myself and offer our resources and information to you. But more importantly, I'm here today to thank you for your act of being courageous and following the law as it is written. And thank you, one, as a West Virginia citizen, as a registered nurse of 25 years in our great state, as a disabled veteran of 12 years in two different branches and two different wars, as an immunization advocate, as a mother of three, a wife, a public servant who ran Braxton County's Health Department as a director of nursing for 15 years, and as a Christian. It is never easy to stand up and do what is right morally or legally, but thank you for what you do and for your service.
Next up, we have Tara Ramo. Her topic is truth.
Blessings to all. The Book of John, Chapter 11, selected verses circa AD 80 to 95. Now, when Jesus came, he found that Lazarus had already been in the tomb four days. So when Martha heard that Jesus was coming, she went and met him, but Mary remained seated in the house. Martha said to Jesus, "Lord, if you had been here, my brother would not have died. But even now I know that whatever you ask from God, God will give you." Jesus said to her, "Your brother will rise again." Martha said to him, "I know that he will rise again in the resurrection on the last day." Jesus said to her, "I am the resurrection and the life. Whoever believes in me, though he die, yet shall he live. And everyone who lives and believes in me shall never die. Do you believe this?" She said to him, "Yes, Lord. I believe that you are the Christ, the Son of God, who is coming into the world." Then Jesus, deeply moved again, came to the tomb. It was a cave, and a stone lay against it. Jesus said, "Take away the stone." Martha, the sister of the dead man, said to him, "Lord, by this time, there will be an odor, for he has been dead four days." Jesus said to her, "Did I not tell you that if you believed, you would see the glory of God? So they took away the stone, and Jesus lifted up his eyes and said, 'Father, I thank you that you have heard me. I knew that you always hear me, but I said this on account of the people standing around, that they may believe that you sent me.'" When he had said these things, he cried out with a loud voice, "Lazarus, come out." The man who had died came out, his hands and feet bound with linen strips and his face wrapped with a cloth. Jesus said to them, "Unbind him and let him go. Solus Christus."
Our last delegation is Mickey Blackwell with West Virginia Principals Association.
He's waiting on me to speak so he can hit the button. Good morning, everyone. I'm Mickey Blackwell, Executive Director of the West Virginia Principals Association. I'd like to echo what you've heard so far. We represent administrators pre-K through 12 and CTE administrators across the state of West Virginia, and we want to thank you for your stance on vaccinations and supporting students across the way. Every good leader knows that the most important thing is the health and safety of their members. And if we are not keeping our children healthy and safe, then we are remiss in our number one job. And you guys have set an excellent example for this. You've set an example across the state, and you've set an example for administrators to follow. We get a lot of emotions up here, and I would just like to say from the Johns Hopkins University that the United States surpassed a milestone in having reported measles cases with 2025, now having the most cases since the disease was declared eliminated in 2000, and the most cases in more than three decades. Everybody that works in a school knows that whatever the kids get, you get. And so we're not only protecting the children in our schools, we're protecting the teachers, the staff in our schools, we're protecting the members of the community who are with us. Those are facts. Those aren't beliefs, those aren't opinions, those are facts. And we thank you for standing behind the health and safety of our children. We can ask for nothing more, and we just hope that it's something that somebody stands by. And I would like to say to all the folks listening across the way, if you really wanted to support student safety and health, you would get a comprehensive, affordable PEIA plan in place so that our staffs, our children's parents, would be able to afford insurance and not have to worry about spending more money than they're getting without having a raise. And we hope that you can put as much focus on PEIA in an insensible manner as you have put on this vaccination. Thank you all as board members. Thank you, Madam Superintendent, for your leadership. Thank you, Ms. White, for your leadership. We appreciate everything you've done.
I was mistaken. We do have one more delegation. President White, it's Pastor Randy Richardson. And that's our final one.
I am Randolph Richardson. I'm the pastor at your neighbor Trinity Lutheran Church, just down on the corner of Canala Boulevard and Elizabeth. This morning, as I got to my office, I turned on some news accounts, and to reiterate what was said, they reported that as of Monday, there were 1,277 measles cases in the United States reported this year in 2025, and the two children had already died in Texas this year as a result of the measles. I want to thank you for keeping us safe and our children safe here in West Virginia. You know, I am old enough that I remember the measles raging through the schools. I'm old enough to remember kids who never came back to class for one reason or another because of measles and childhood diseases. I'm old enough to remember friends who had braces on their legs, and my parents' friends who were in iron lugs. I'm old enough to remember the sugar cube at the community center when we went to be vaccinated or immunized from polio, and how proud and how happy my parents were to stand there and watch my brothers and I receive that. I'm old enough to remember that. And I'm also old enough that I remember CPE, which is Clinical Pastoral Education, where I did that as a chaplain at the Children's Hospital in Columbus. And I know what it's like to hold dead babies. I know what it's like to deal with parents who are suffering because their parents have nothing to do and can do nothing about the suffering their parents or their children are going through. And it hurts me to think that there are parents who would think that that would be a religious thing that they should do to let their children suffer. In my understanding of religion, virtually every religion is a communal religion. Jesus talked about, or St. Paul talked about, the body of believers and the body of Christ as the church, and how we're there to help one another and to care for one another. It is a communal action, a communal faith that we all recognize and we all profess. And I want to thank you for being part of that community.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Prove by Mr. Hardesty, second by Mr. Booton. Any other questions? Yes?
Yes, I do have a couple of questions about Items Eight and Nine on the Consent Agenda. Item Eight deals with AP Teachers, Advanced Placement Teacher Training. And while I remember in Policy 2510, there is a, you know, this would be in a previous iteration, but it's still there, that AP teachers were exempted from attending the Summer Policy Institute if 80% of their students had a passing grade on the preceding school year's national test. And I want to make sure that that is still the case. They were exempted from having to go to these additional trainings if they had that, if their students had that 80% pass rate, or if the teacher held advanced AP credentials. So I just want to make sure that it's still in there, Joey.
Yeah. It is still in there. So what this waiver actually does, though, is you know how every week, every time, every once a month, I've got all those different AP waivers that come? So basically, for a year, if a teacher did not get it, they have one year to make that up for the next year. So this is all that takes care of. So that way, every board meeting, I'm not bringing you AP waivers. We approve them one time for the year, and then they still are required the next summer to take that. So this is just taking care of that. The other part about them being exempt still exists. It doesn't change any of that.
Okay, that's good. I just want to make sure, because this is an official record of our proceedings, I just want to make sure that the teachers out there, the administrators, understand that that's still in.
Yes, that's still there. All this does is take care of those teachers who are not certified at all. Automatically, they get certified if they complete those things that are listed in there.
Okay, all right. And thank you, Joey. And Number Nine has to do with charter school teachers being allowed to give the tests. So I do have some questions. I'm glad you're here. Thank you. We have 3,400 children enrolled in virtual charter schools. That's, I believe, 83% of the total number of charter school students. So my question is, do we know how many charter school teachers are not certified, licensed, or permitted in West Virginia?
Yes, I don't have those figures. The certification office would probably be able to get those.
Well, I think that...
If I can just... Actually, we do not have that information, because they're not required to register or go through our Office of Certification at all in the charter schools.
And that brings up a related question. How are charter schools and the Charter School Board related to us? Related to you, the department, related to the board?
I think Mrs. Talbot can speak to exactly how that's written in code.
Under the law, the Charter School Board reports to this board. They are answerable to you. You still have general supervision of the public schools under the law and the Constitution, and they are subordinate to this board under that organizational chart, so to speak.
Okay, so it's within our right, our responsibility, to know this information, perhaps? You know, to have access to certain things? So I just throw that out. But what additional training might be required of these charter school teachers? They're giving the test virtually. They're giving, you know, these are virtual students who are being tested virtually on the same task that our public school students take in the school in their desk. So there must be some sort of training that is embedded in your work?
Yes, there is a, it's a remote certification course that's through our vendors platform that we administer that. They have to complete that before they can be, before they're even authorized to be able to give the test remotely. So we actually have a couple. They have to go through the traditional training that everybody else does. Their county test coordinators have to provide them with the training for test administration, test security, information on Policy 2340. All of those things have to be followed. And then in addition to that, there is these remote certification courses that's online. It's not a long course. It doesn't take a long time, but it goes through all of the requirements that they have to follow in order to administer the test remotely.
So you would have access to the number of charter school teachers who have taken this training?
We can get that information.
You can get that. I think that would be interesting for us to know. And do you recall how many charter school students completed assessments virtually in the school year that just ended?
I don't have those figures, but we can get that.
Again, I think it would be good for us to know that, because, you know, as of this past school year, 3,400 charter school students, which is larger than many of our counties, and 83% of them were enrolled in virtual programs. So I just, so thank you. I look forward to hearing the information.
Yes, we'll make sure we get that information.
And I would request that perhaps we need a session in our next meeting or an upcoming meeting on charter schools, since they are under our responsibility. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda. All in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. That brings us to new business. Item A, Policy 4336, West Virginia School Transportation Requirements. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, before that. Yeah, hold on a second. Thank you, Mr. Dunlevy, for interrupting.
We've had the pleasure of having a new SSA director.
Jermaine.
You just forgot to remind me of that. Yeah. We've had the pleasure of having a new SSA director appointed just this past week, and Wayne Ryan is here. I'd like for him to stay up and stand up at least, where is he? Oh, there you go. Make it great, and introduce the staff.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dunlevy, appreciate you, appreciate Michelle and members of this board for what you do. I want you to know that. As you know, we're in a transition in WVSSAC office because not only on Monday, July 7, is the first day the new staff was together. So we have hit the ground running with a five-hour media committee, because the media is important. On Monday, a five-hour board meeting of our own yesterday, and today we're here with you. So I want to introduce my staff. They are around back here in the back. I'd like to introduce them to you if I could, okay? Because I'm very proud of their professionalism and how we've hit the ground running, despite that we've only been together for a couple of days. Mr. Jason Bankston comes to us from the athletic director's position at Capitol Basin High School, and he is a new position in our office called Director of Compliance. As you are well aware, rules and laws have changed a lot over the last two years, and it has changed drastically what we have to follow up on and enforce tremendously. So having a person who is the go-to point person as a Director of Compliance is going to be a great service to our schools and our administration and to our students, so that it was going to be Jason's primary position. He'll also have a couple of sports. Chris Wells comes to us from the principal at Ritchie County High School, and he comes with a lot of experience as a former athletic trainer, athletic director, and a principal. So he's worn a lot of those hats, brings a lot of knowledge and application to the table, and he's going to be over some primary sports of football, basketball, and baseball, basically some of the sports that I used to oversee. Dr. Jaclyn Swain comes to us as the former principal of St. Owens High School, with a lot of background in athletics as an athlete, as a parent of an athlete, as a school administrator, and as a coach. So again, we've hired people that have worn a lot of hats and had a lot of experiences in various roles as far as education-based athletics goes. Very happy with these three new additions to our staff. And then... So again, we've hired people that have, uh, worn a lot of hats and had a lot of experiences in various roles as far as education-based athletics goes. I'm very happy with these three new additions to our staff. And then Dan Comer. Um, I need to tell you a story about Dan Comer. Dan has been with us now for two years. He came to us from the Berkeley County School System Central Office, and Dan has done a tremendous job, but we are most proud of Dan for this. In January, Dan had open heart surgery. And last week, when we all attended the National Federation's High School Associations Conference in Chicago, Dan is the national champion in the five K walk for the National Federation. And he used, uh, he used his rehab as, as training and as a challenge to himself to get to a certain point by July from January, and he accomplished those goals. And I'm proud to say I've completed the race also, but, uh, and, uh, Dr. Swain participated, completed, she ran the race, Dan and I walked, but Dan is your national champion. We greatly appreciate him, and we're really glad Dan is with us, because Dan went through a health scare. And so, you know, I want to call the Heart Association, see if we can make a story out of Dan Comer, just to be honest, okay? All right. So to give you a little background on myself, I, I was here just a few years ago when Mr. Price, uh, took over for a couple of years, but I've been in the office for nine years as an assistant or an associate director. Prior to that, I spent my career at Summers County as a school administrator, as an athletic director, as a coach, teacher. I spent twenty-eight years in, in that school system. So again, I think I've worn a lot of hats also, and so I think we bring a lot of experience. But as you know, there are new problems that come every day, and we look forward to those challenges and, and working together with you as we move forward, okay?
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to comment?
I would just like to say thank you. The SSAC is a, an important part of our schools and what you do to organize, um, all the activities. To me, it's always been mystifying because it's so complicated and, but it's so important. And I know that you're facing all sorts of challenges. Um, I, I read just the other day about Van High School, uh, losing its, its football team. It's heartbreaking to see our schools lose, uh, our, our children lose access to the athletic programs that you all oversee. So, um, I, I, I wish you all very well. Um, I was, I'm glad, and, and I know that you know this, I was glad to see how your Board of Control figured out all the rules recently. Um, I know that's always a challenge. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Mrs. Justice.
Wayne, I just wanted to say congratulations. You'll do a wonderful job. We've known you for a long time.
Yes.
I know Jim has coached against you for a long time, and he always had great teams, I mean, great teams, so it's really.
We've got some great memories.
Oh, yes, yes.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
I think I can speak on everyone's behalf, that we wish you the best.
I appreciate that.
And we're forward to working with you going forward.
And, and, and again, I want to reiterate, we appreciate you and what you do for our students and our schools, and we're in this together, and, uh, we're, we're going to work right with you, uh, every step of the way, okay? So, thank you.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of serving with Wayne yesterday in the past, since two thousand four, do you complain?
Pardon me?
When did you start here, two thousand four?
Uh, no, sixteen in the office.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So I've been around the SSAC since two thousand four, so I, I think I've seen come and go, but this is a great leader for us, and he's got a great staff, and I'm supporting. I spent two or three hours with him yesterday, so he's a good man.
Appreciate it.
And he has a great staff.
Thank you again.
Thank you, thank you.
Now we can move on to new business in policy forty-three-thirty-six, the West Virginia school transportation requirements. Jimmy Lacy.
Morning, President White, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Black, and board members. One of my tasks when I came here was to separate policies that had been put back together, which was forty-three-thirty-six and forty-three-thirty-four. So we're here to present forty-three-thirty-six for approval.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Lacy?
So now we have the build a bus versus the ride a bus?
Yes, we will have.
We will have.
We will have, yeah.
And this is the, uh, build a bus part?
This is the ride the bus.
This is the ride.
The build a bus will be the next one we do.
Okay, well, good. Well, and, and you received thirteen comments. What, what, what kind of things were people looking at?
Um.
That affected the, the policy, that changed it?
Some of the comments, um, were defining like wheelchair securement or wheelchair safety was one of the comments that we had. We had nothing in policy, nothing in place for what says a wheelchair is safe, and given guidance for drivers and aides, and in this case, an LPN, on what to do with an unsafe wheelchair. We had comments of things that needed added or corrections to, or not really corrections, but adding additional language to make things more easily to understand. They were really good comments. A lot of comments came from directors of transportation that know the policy and have been by the policy for years, so it was really good to get their feedback on things.
Well, it's important, so important, um, and so thank you for your good work. I know it's a dense policy.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lacy? Is there a motion that policy forty-three-thirty-six be approved and effective upon final filing?
Show move.
Moved by Mr. Gabriel.
So.
Second by Ms. Sullivan. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, Roan County Schools Report, Ms. Kriner.
Good morning, President White, Vice President Gabriel, Superintendent Black, members of the board. Um, today I am presenting to you a, an update on the financial status of Roan County Schools. Um, before I begin, I wanted to introduce the new superintendent of Roan County Schools. She's here, Michelle Stalotto, and she's available to answer any questions. Um, much of the information that this report is based on came from the Office of School Finance, and as you know, they are having their conference this week, so they're not, they're not here, but I'll do my best to answer any questions that you might have. Um, due to declining enrollment, failure to approve a consolidation plan, lack of sufficient personnel action, and other operational decisions, Roan County Schools is out of compliance with West Virginia Code eleven-eight-twenty-six and is facing a significant projected budget deficit for fiscal year twenty-six. Um, after working with Roan County Schools throughout the school year, Superintendent Blatt sent a memo, um, informing them of her intention to present this report to the board and also to recommend, um, a state of emergency for Roan County Schools. Some of the key findings, um, that, that were, um, brought about as a result of us looking into the finances and the timeline with the Office of School Finance, um, Roan County Schools had an average building utilization rate of forty-five percent for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which is among, among the lowest in the state. Um, based on the October first, twenty-twenty-four certified data, um, it showed that Roan County Schools employs seven-point-five-four professional and nine-point-two service positions over and above the funding formula, and the cost of those positions has to be covered entirely by local funds. Um, the Office of School Finance really became involved when there was a, an error, um, in budgeting that caused six hundred thousand dollars to be applied to, um, special education for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. And when they looked into that, a root cause of that improper budgeting had been that there was some inaccurate data that was, um, certified and submitted as part of that October first, um, certified data. An additional cause of some of the financial issues is, um, going over budget on the construction of the new Spencer Middle School. Um, that really critically impacted the financial position of the school system. And, um, there may have been purchases. We're still looking into some of the purchasing for the furnishings of that school in excess of a million dollars that were made without board approval. Um, they are facing this year a potential deficit for as, as much as two-point-five million for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and a potential deficit based on their budget as, for as much as two-point-nine million for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. In March, Roan County Schools received a four-hundred-and-two-thousand-dollar advance on their June allocation of the state aid formula to cover immediate expenses. And on, um, actually, as of yesterday, they have requested another three-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand dollars to make their Ju-, July fourteenth payroll. Um, and that would be an advance on their state aid funding for next June. So based on the, um, the capacity of the district to solve this problem and the impact it has on students and to bring them into compliance with, with all applicable, um, laws and policies, um, we recommend that a state of emergency be declared in Roan County Schools and, um, that the WVDE provide prioritized support to help, um, Superintendent Stalotto really hit the ground running with, um, correcting some of these deficiencies, and that we work with their board and their central office leadership to come up with an action plan, um, to make progress toward reducing this deficit prior to the December meeting of this board.
Thank you. So we need to further discuss the situation before you make a, you have questions? Yeah, I know. Do you want to ask them?
Yeah, then I can.
Okay, go ahead. Yes.
It's fine.
Um, thank you, thank you. I'm perplexed, you know, I'll start by saying that. I looked back at the, um, accreditation reports for, um, Roan County for twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. And, um, in, in every year, all of their county operational efficiency standards were meets requirement except the one, uh, for special ed. I think that was in twenty-four. The finances is one of those operational indicators, and it was meets requirements every time. And I assumed, and perhaps this is where I'm assuming incorrectly, that that stamp of accrue, of approval is somehow tied to their annual audit that, you know, all schools, all counties must submit. Am I wrong?
They do have, um, a checklist in the Office of School Finance that they go through, and they earn certain points for certain, um, pieces on that. And then the Office of School Finance provides us with, um, the listing of, of who needs assistance and who meets requirements.
So I, I guess I'm hearing that it's a checklist that's, was something submitted on time versus the quality of, you know, what was the audit saying? I mean, is anybody keeping eyes on that? This is not the only county, I'm sure, that is, is in the situation Roan is in for a lot of reasons.
Correct.
So, you know, that, that's just something that, uh, you know, it's, it's, and are, are county treasurers included in the school aid formula? Every county has to have one, but are they included?
That is an unfunded position.
That is an unfunded position, yet it's critical. They're required.
It's required by the law.
Required, and yet the, the, the counties aren't being helped. So does, and, and I realize that, that you're not in the Office of School Fin-, I mean, I know that, and I'm asking questions, and hopefully, somebody will get back to the board with answers on this at some point. But does the, this, it sounds like this treasurer might have been a new treasurer, you know, to the position. Does, does the department give training to, to school treasurers?
I'm aware that there is training that's provided, and there's actually a mentorship program that has been, um, started out of that office, where they are providing all of the new CSBOs with mentors in, in their positions to help support them.
Everything that can be done to prevent this from happening, not just in Roan, but across the state.
Absolutely.
Um, the, the department working with Roan, that, that's a positive move. Um, but the money situation in Roan is not, you know, in other counties, is absolutely concerning. And from what I read just out there, the number one factor contributing to deficits and funding balances is the loss of enrollment. And we're seeing that across the state. And so I can imagine that between HOPE scholarships and charter schools, that it must be exceedingly difficult for counties to project what their enrollment is going to be. It used to be, you look at the birth records, and you could pretty much figure, but, but they don't have it. I looked up, and Roan lost fifty-eight students from the previous year to last year. Interestingly, Roan had ninety students on HOPE scholarships, and, um, had those students attended Roan County Schools, the county would have received seven-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. What a, you know, what a remarkable boost that would have been to their situation. Um, then there, there, you know, I, I, and you know me, I look at, I, I like to look at data. I won't apologize for that, but it's the truth. There are charter schools that are impacting Roan County. Now remember, and you know, we all know, that the charter school board receives ninety-nine percent of a county's total allowance per pupil, and those funds are taken directly out of the current year budget. So for a county to expect that they have this much money, and all of a sudden that money is gone because they have some charter kids coming out, uh, that makes it very hard to budget, which you, you would agree with that. Um, from what I can tell, sixteen of the Roan County children were enrolled in charter schools last year. Um, fourteen of them were in virtual charter schools. And Roan County sent over a hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars last year to support those children. The amount spent by the charter school board on those, those fourteen, uh, students was just over fifty-five thousand, and that left an unspent balance of about seventy-one thousand. My question, what happens to the unspent balance of funds that counties send to the charter school board? Does that money come back to the county? Does it sit in the coffers of the, the charter school board? Um, do, do we know the answer to, I mean, I don't know the answer. I would assume that the money is not coming back.
Great, yeah. I, I know the money does not come back, and I'm assuming that it sits in wherever the, the charter school that received that funding would have it as part of their carryover.
The charter school board would have it. The, this, I'm talking about for virtual, for virtual.
Charter, the charter school, whichever company owns that particular charter school. So the, the char-, not the large charter school board, but the board that runs that particular school, charter school.
So for-profit entities are sitting on unspent funds that the public schools could be using?
If, if they're not using the full amount that we've sent in the state aid, they would be, yes, they would be keeping that fund.
So somebody is, you know, I'll use the word profiteering, but that, that's, that might be a, a little, um, over the edge there. Um, well, so, you know, what, what can you, what can you do from the department to, I mean, all the counties are suffering. It's lack of money tied to declining enrollment, so it'd be interesting to hear what kind of plan will be developed to help Roan and other counties.
But we visited Roan County last week, um, to begin that process. We went up on Thursday with, um, personnel from the Office of School Finance and facilities, and just kind of talked with their board and their superintendent about, you know, realistically where they stand now and what can possibly be done. And I know one of the action steps that they're looking at is going through line by line in their budget and making sure that every single one of those projected items in that budget is accurate.
And, and they did get SBA money, money, I believe, for the new middle school up there?
Yes.
So does the SBA not keep an eye on funds?
Um, I think that there was a match that exceeded what they initially thought.
That the counties thought they could put more in, and they were able to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Alex, good job again on this, uh, report. Um, Ms. Sullivan has been very good at looking at data over the years, and I appreciate that. I kind of look at the numbers. Um, and, and this is troubling on numerous fronts. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, you've got fifty-five boards of education that basically function like fifty-five corporations. And the sad part is, a board of education, we're the only one that can't take care of our employees and manage our workforce like a private sector company would be, and that's, that's the- And that's, that's a discussion for another day across the street and we'll have that obviously come January. But you've got a CEO, which is superintendent, and young lady, you're new on the job. Bless you. You've got major problems in your lap right now. But you're the CEO, you've got five board members as your board of directors. And it's set up like that for a checks and balance system. Uh, from what I read here in Roan County, there's no checks and balances. Either someone was led astray, either intentionally, not intentionally, that's not for me to decide, but a couple of things on this report are very disturbing. 45% building utilization. That, that can't work. Math does not work. Will never work. Your situation on professional and service position's over. Uh, I doubt you can get much lower on service because of special needs children and, and special needs aid. I get that, that's hard for any county. You'll have to find a way to address the seven professional over. It'll be painful, but you're going to have to address that. I'm not telling you nothing you don't know. My concern on the school, how they think they could purchase furniture out of federal programs. They know better than that. I mean, that's 101 stuff. That's not rocket science. That's 101 stuff. The budgeting and the forecasting, do you think someone miscodes stuff on purpose? Is that something when we peel back the onion, will we find that? It's because the fastest way for a treasurer, you can, you can miscode things and you can hide the, hide under the shell, so to speak, for so long, but then eventually it'll, it'll come to light. From 2022 to 2026, a million four carryover in '22, a projected deficit of 2.9 million in '26, that's a $4.3 million swing in five years in a small county with a small population. Was everybody asleep at the wheel in Roan County? And again, I hate to be the bad guy all the time, but, but the public deserves the right to know. I said when I came here, I work for the children and the taxpayer. Sounds like both are getting a bad deal here. Because boards of educations can't go to Facebook, they got to use the code book. Y'all have heard me say this till I'm blue in the face. But you know what? They won't. They don't want to make the tough decisions. Then people come here and criticize us for having to make tough decisions after the fact. I've got big shoulders, I don't care, I can take it. But we'll base it on facts, not fiction. But I don't know how you're going to do your job, young lady. I admire you for coming on board. Were you made aware of these issues when you took the job?
Both of them, sir.
But not all? Okay. And, and again, we, we as a department and a board, we stand behind you, we're willing to help you any way we can. But people in Roan County got to start helping themselves. And what I see here is a trend developing, and I probably shouldn't say this, but you all that know me, I've got a bad habit of saying what I think. What's happening in stuff like this is boards of education are not wanting to make tough decisions and they think that ultimately at the end of the day, we'll make them for them. We're getting tired of making your decisions for you. Do your job. They raised their right hand just like I did to uphold the law and do what they're supposed to do. They're not doing that. They're not doing that in a lot of counties. We've probably got 10, 12 counties in this state that's got problems in a big way with regard to how they run their school system. We can't take over everybody. We don't want to do that. But you got to do your job. Govern by the code book, not Facebook, make tough decisions. It can't be one side of the county versus the other side of the county. And Southern West Virginia is notorious for that. And we heard a couple of people chime in earlier from Boone County who, who chose that course of action this morning. It's got to be for the children. Focus on the children and the taxpayer. Any way we can help you, I mean, I could, I could talk till I'm blue in the face, I'm not going to do that. I mean, this is disturbing on numerous fronts. This is the second time we've had to front in money to make payroll. The elevator's going to the bottom floor if something drastic is not done. It's going to be painful. But if you've got the guts to make the decisions, we'll stand behind you and try to support you. That's all I can tell you. And I wish you the very best. Thank you.
Mr. Abrams?
I guess I could stand here and echo what Mrs. Sullivan, Paul just said a few minutes. You got a tough job ahead of you. I mean, a real tough job, and it's not going to be popular. People will be against you and they'll be talking against you the way we had this morning. I, I'm, I'm trying to perceive in my mind how you got to this point, just like Mr. Hardesty said a minute ago. How do you build a new school and pledge to put money in it that you don't have? How do you buy furniture? And charge it to federal programs? How do you do that when you didn't have the money to start with? Which one of you out there could run your household that way? Can you all buy something you don't have the money for? I mean, we're at a point now where it's tough to go back and pick up the pieces. And I'm not trying to point fingers or shoot, shoot darts at someone, but we work for the taxpayers and we're all up here for the kids. We want the kids in Roan County to have the best education possible. That's why we're sitting here. We can't do that when we spend money we don't have. We all need to work together. I'm sure that Michelle Blatt and the staff here will help you any way you, any, any, anything we can do, we're here. But let me tell you, young lady, you are, you've got a rough road ahead of you. Us picking up those pieces is really going to be tough. Godspeed.
Superintendent Blatt?
Yes, I don't know, before, you know, we make a recommendation and the board votes on it, if, you know, Superintendent Stellato, if you'd like to say something, and I believe you do have some of your board members here with you.
Well, first and foremost, thank you. Um, and I will echo what Ms. Kriner said, we are grateful. Um, I'm five days officially in this role and we are grateful for the support that has been extended to us above and beyond what should be expected for support to be extended to a county that has come from the department and all of the offices. We requested that they come visit with us last week and they made that happen going into a holiday weekend. And they were very thorough, very kind, and very forthcoming with what's lies ahead of us and, and the decisions and the direction that we have to go. I hear what everyone says. I, I do echo the sentiment that we are in a dire position in Roan County. But what I want to make everyone aware of is that we are going in with eyes wide open. I have an amazing staff that is willing to do the work. We understand that it's going to be very unpopular. We understand that we're going to have to make very difficult decisions. But we too will make those decisions with, with the lens of what's best for the children and what's best for the county as a whole. We are going to need support. You are 100% correct, sir, that picking up the pieces of this is, is going to be a, a tough challenge for all of us. But we are, we've hit the ground running, we've already started identifying areas that have been missed. We've already started making decisions about cuts. We've added compliance to some folks' job descriptions because that's one of the things is we feel like we've just been missing some support in those areas where we've had new employees. It is a struggle in a small county such as ours to find folks who have the experience and the background to do the jobs. But what we, what we do find is that we have willing folks who will step up to the plate. So I, I just want to echo that. And I don't want to try to provide excuses or answers at this point, but there is, there's not a stone that we will leave unturned. And I do believe that we can come up with a plan, an unfortunate plan, but a plan nonetheless, that will address this issue and then some, because we have to continue to project for declining enrollment going forward. So thank you for having us and we appreciate the pledge of support.
If you would ask your board member who's present?
Yes, Mr. Mace is the president of the board.
Uh, I would just echo Ms. Stellato's sentiments as well, but just going to answer some of the questions that have been, I think, uh, no one wants to believe that you're purposely misled, uh, obviously that on that front. I think we do have a, uh, one of our issues is in our budgeting and forecasting, obviously. And we have new treasurer in the county. I think we have been cognizant of that, tried to, uh, work with Ms. Stellato as she's coming in. Of course, obviously with the new leadership change. Uh, and I, I think we've, uh, as a board, uh, there is an, uh, an echo to see more transparency to the board, redundancy in task as far as, as what comes to, especially when it comes to budgeting and forecasting. And, uh, those are going to be things that, uh, I think that, uh, many, all of our board members have been echoing here in, in the, in the very, since a good eight, nine months of, since some of these things have been coming to, to light. Uh, I think from as a perspective of a board member, um, that has been the, the, our issue, that it was, I don't believe that we were completely, uh, aware of the magnitude of where we were at, that even as recent as this current budget preparation, uh, there were some significant discrepancies that were, we, we were presented, uh, that errors that occurred at the, in, in the, at the, at the treasurer level. And, um, so, uh, I think that's one of our quiet, you know, helpful, that's been helpful that we can work with the Office of Finance and get them to, uh, to continue to support and mentor that. That's one of the things I asked for personally, is that we, that they would work with that, that department and, uh, that also we can work with all of our departments, right? The, all of the, all the budgeting aspects out of each department. Um, so, uh, I don't think there is a, I think, uh, from a willingness of the board, the board understands the position, the current position now, understands that we have a, a very difficult path ahead. But I, I don't think that there is a, um, any kind of negative pushback to that. I think everyone is willing to look at, to, you know, what the hard decisions are going to need to be made and work with the, with the department and all the help, especially with the state board as we go forward.
Mr. Hardesty?
Yeah. Thanks for being here. And again, I don't want you to think I'm just trying to beat on you arbitrarily, it's not what I'm doing. I've stood right where you stand before. Me and Mr. Wooten both have done that in our respective former lives. But do you realize, and does your board realize that you have a fiduciary responsibility to operate within a certain percentage or you're personally liable yourself?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure you know that. Because a lot of board members don't. And I've went and spoke at training seminars and tried to explain that to them. But, uh, and again, I talked about the checks and balance system and you all may very well have been the recipient of someone trying to snow you. I don't know that. I'm, I'm not in Roan County on the ground, but, uh, we wish you the best and we want to be a support mechanism to try to help you. We're not up here to just try to beat you over the head, that accomplishes nothing. But again, thanks for being here.
I, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak. And, um, I, I think, yes, everybody understands the, the magnitude on the board.
Mr. Wooten?
Big picture, what is the annual budget for Roan County?
27, yeah, 27 million.
27 million. And the numbers reflected in this report and, and Paul did a good job of running through from 22 to, to 26. But are, are these the deficits you're running? I mean, do you have a carryover, uh, amount that is helping to backstop these deficits? Or is this the ending balance that, that you have in your coffers?
The current 25 is going to be the, are you talking about the 29?
The 2.9.
For the 2.9? All right, hand. 26.
How much carryover did you have from the prior year of the 25 million?
Does she have that?
Because by code, you're, you're supposed to have how much of a carryover?
So at the year end of fiscal year '23, we had 969,000. Okay, year end fiscal year '24, we had 30,000. Year end fiscal '25, it's expected that it's going to be 2.5, could come in a little bit lower, waiting to see how the year shakes out. But it's projected that we didn't make enough cuts into this year and that deficit will grow to another 400,000. So we'll, we'll, we're projected to year, in the year fiscal year '26, that we just started, 2.9 million in the deficit.
So again, to kind of echo all the other comments that were made, me 22, uh, I don't know what, it would be interesting to see what 21 would have looked like. But based on these trends, it was probably closer to a $2 million carryover if I were to just take a guess. But at what point did the caution light come on and say, hey, we, we got a problem? Um, and when you got to $30,000, you know, wasn't that a, to quote my good friend and former governor and now US Senator, good Lord alive. I mean, when, when was somebody going to say, hey, we, we've got a problem?
Yeah. And not to, uh, you know, for not to present excuses or anything, but I think that we, the timeliness of the data that we were being prepared and this 30,000, I, I, I can't recall the timing of that, but I believe that was well after budget season that we got that in. I mean, the 25 budget wasn't even presented and completed with us. And there, that was even with help of, with Office of Finance until I believe September of, uh...
I, I hear what you're saying, but you have, you have board meetings at least once a month and you should be looking at those trends and seeing what's going on. Paul described the 55 counties as kind of many corporations. And honestly, uh, if we're looking at Roan County as a corporation, you guys are bankrupt. You're absolutely bankrupt. And the real question is, is it a chapter 11? Can you reorganize and, and right the ship or is it, is it a chapter seven when you just say, we can't do it? And it seems like time and time again, when we keep having these discussions about potential county takeovers, very little discussion about when maybe the test scores are not all that good. 100% of the time, it is always, it is always about the business of running a school. And something's got to change. Something's got to give in that regard. And I think 60 days is too long of a time to come up with a corrective action because this is just math. This is just math. And I think that, uh, 60 days is way too much time. And I think that coming back to this board at the end of the year is way, way too much time. Because this, this requires constant attention, a critical look at what's going on and an action plan that is going to allow you to run a surplus, uh, or we've got some harder decisions to make. So with that, I'm, I'm done. Thanks.
And, and again, just to follow up on Mr. Wooten's comments, I mean, you have two board meetings a month at least. You get a schedule of invoices at every meeting. You get all your, all your expenditures and all the steps, the whole nine yards. It does not take a rocket scientist and if your superintendent lied to you, come to high heavens. You're hemorrhaging, you are hemorrhaging cash. You can see that when you, when you get the schedule of invoices at every meeting, I mean, it's, it should jump off the page. I mean, and again, not trying to be critical, but maybe we need to retool school board trainings altogether to where there's more attentions paid to the schedule of finances. Because if you have a superintendent that's at odd with the board, at least the board could see and understand. I think we've got a, a large number of board members in the state of West Virginia that have no concept or little concept of the budget in their respective counties. And I don't mean that, I'm not trying to throw stones, I mean, I'll stand by that statement. I've served with some that could not read a budget. You are hemorrhaging cash. It's a $4.3 million swing in five years. And if, going back to '21, it may be a, a $2 million carryover. This is something that they're going to come back here way more, we're going to modify this one because, like Greg said, I don't know if you're in chapter seven or if you're in chapter 11. I don't know which, I don't know which the case is. But, uh, outside of personnel season, that's a problem because you got to carry what you carry. How many of your directors are 260?
None.
Most 240?
240, yes, sir.
Any Q50s?
No, sir.
And again, those are things I'm sure that you're going to try to go through, whittle down the best you can, but, uh, I'm afraid, young lady, they've tied your hands and feet together and told you to swim and that's going to be very hard to do. But we'll help you any way we can. And again, please, I don't want you to think I'm beating on you, but we want to try to help you, but I just don't know how it got this far. But I just don't know how it got this far, this fast in a bad way. And it's, it's, it's really tough. Thank you, Madam President.
Yes, sir.
So you took over July one. So how long have you known about this?
Um, I've been the assistant superintendent in Roan County for the two years prior. Um, we became, we, we started getting our first red flags concern, um, about a year ago.
So has an audit been done in that county?
We do. We do an audit every year.
I don't know. I, I agree with what was been said. Uh, Michelle, I, I, I think we need to get them to report to us a little more often, if you don't mind.
Do you know whether or not your county was on a financial watch list during that time?
Yeah. In February, we went on a financial watch. We've had, we've had Office of Finance met with that as well.
This is really serious, critical stuff and it, it's critical. How many students enrolled in that county?
Um, a little over sixteen hundred currently.
Sixteen hundred. No further questions.
Well, do we need to have any further discussion before I ask the superintendent for a recommendation? Split.
Thank you. And Mrs. Criner, and thanks for her update. And I know that she had talked about this as well, but, um, I would recommend that the WVBE declare a state of emergency in Roan County schools and that the Roan County Board of Education members and the superintendent will work with department staff um, to provide an update on the plan, um, at the August board meeting, if that's acceptable with, with the group.
I'd like to interject something. You know, we've been sitting here, Paul, Mr. Wooten, Deborah, we've all made statements and we've all asked for this staff to help you all, correct? I'm here to make one statement. I hope that board is going to work in unison with that superintendent. That's very important because if they're not working together, that's not going to work and we'll have to take further action. Do you have that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to declare a state of emergency exists in Roan County schools and to accept the recommendations by Superintendent Blatt?
Sure.
Been moved by Dr. Sandsbury, seconded by Mr. Dunlevy. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is an executive session to discuss legal matters. Mr. Gabriel, do you have a motion?
I turned the microphone. I move we entered into executive session under the personnel privacy and attorney-client privileges exceptions authorized by the West Virginia Code six nine A three for discussion of items B, C, and D on the agenda.
Is there a second? Seconded by Miss, Mrs. Sullivan. Um, any other question, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let the record stand that we went into executive session at eleven fifteen AM.
Let the record reflect that the board returned from executive session at 1:03 PM without taking any actions.
All right, I need to consider the West Virginia Board of Education and the West Virginia Department of Education personnel matters. Is there a motion that the WVBE personnel matters included in the attachment be approved?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Gabriel. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. The next item is the West Virginia Department of Education personnel matters. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Moved by Mr. Dunlevy, seconded by Mrs. Justice. Any other discussion, question? All in favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item six, the WVDE report, superintendent's plats.
Thank you, I just have a couple of things to share. One is a success story. I know this board has put a focus for the last three years on getting back to the basics and what it looks like for our reading and math. And we were just made aware this week of a report that was released in June from Upswing Labs. And they looked at the dynamic districts and states and where and how literacy was improving. Looking at our third grade reading scores. And so, West Virginia was one of the four states recognized for having sustained growth over three years. We actually had a 5% increase over that time. And which put us the second highest of the states in the survey. But they also looked at several of the districts and at the progress they were making. Looking at their poverty index and their diversity index and things. And so, they recognize Campbell County, Canal, Logan, Marion, Mercer, Mon, Ohio, Putnam, and Raleigh. As schools that were, over the past three years, have made significant improvements in their literacy scores. And so, we're excited to when we can get the final data for this past school year to add to that and see that those trends improve. The other thing I had to share was we have one of the things that often will bring our ELA or our reading scores down is the writing. And those things, and we've had Vanessa Hayes is one of our literacy specialists that focuses a lot on the writing. And has seen great success in the counties that she worked with this past year on the writing and the impact that it's making in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And so, we've partnered with Mountain State Educational Services Collaborative to offer a year-long virtual writing training. With cohorts of our ELA teachers to really start them focusing on the different forms of writing. It'll be in a PLC format with live sessions that they can attend. Classroom instructional videos, and then collaborative instruction to kind of replicate what she's done in those other states. And so, we'll be kicking that off August the 5th. And so, we're hoping that we'll have counties across the state see some of the gains that we know those few schools that she worked with this year have piloted as we move forward. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Next item is board member updates and requests for information. We'll start with Mr. Woodin.
Madam President, I have two grandkids that are playing Little League, Little League All-Stars going on. As most of you, I'm sure, know. And before every game, they have to recite the Little League pledge. And thank given where we find ourselves at this red hot moment with vaccination laws and constitutional challenges to our ability to even operate. It's instructive what they say before a game. "I trust in God, I love my country, and will respect its laws. I will play fair and strive to win, but win or lose, I will always do my best." I feel like this board's doing that. I hope we continue to be Little Leaguers in that regard. But be prepared to play like a big Leaguer so we can get some of these matters resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stansberry.
Well said, Mr. Woodin. Nothing for me, thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan.
I did several things, but the one that was most impactful to me was I was invited to the Summer Policy Summit. That was sponsored by the West Virginia Center on Budget and Policy. And co-sponsored by the American Friends Society. And at the institute, about 50 people from all over the state came. They were college-age, graduate students, adults of all ages. It was quite a group. And they worked in small groups of four or five people each. And they were looking at education, that was their topic. And their role was to come up with policies that might be implemented in the state. And just to hear their ideas, and then they had, I was there to hear them present. And it was remarkable to see the ideas they had, the intelligence that they approached things with, their data interest. It was uplifting, it was energizing. And we need to be encouraging that kind of activity among others in the state. It was really remarkable.
Thank you.
This is pretty simple, but kind of like Greg. I heard an upcoming second grader read a book to me yesterday. And it was so, if you could just see the beam coming out of his smile from reading and stuff, he was so proud. And that he goes to every word and when he doesn't know it, sounds it out and everything. But just the knowledge, it's just like a sponge soaking up everything.
Let the record reflect that the board returned from executive session at 1:03 PM without taking any actions. All right, I need to consider the West Virginia Board of Education and the West Virginia Department of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion that the WVBE Personnel Matters included in the attachment be approved?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Gabriel. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is the West Virginia Department of Education Personnel Matters. Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Moved by Mr. Dunlevy, seconded by Mrs. Justice. Any other discussion, question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, the WVDE report, Superintendent Platts.
Thank you, I just have a couple of things to share. One is a success story. I know this board has put a focus for the last three years on getting back to the basics and what it looks like for our reading and math. And we were just made aware this week of a report that was released in June from Upswing Labs. And they looked at the dynamic districts and states and where and how literacy was improving. Looking at our third grade reading scores. And so, West Virginia was one of the four states recognized for having sustained growth over three years. We actually had a 5% increase over that time. And which put us the second highest of the states, you know, in the survey. But they also looked at several of the districts and at the progress they were making. Looking at their poverty index and their diversity index and things. And so, they recognize Campbell County, Canal, Logan, Marion, Mercer, Mon, Ohio, Putnam, and Raleigh. As schools that were, over the past three years, have made significant improvements in their literacy scores. And so, we're excited to when we can get the final data for this past school year. To add to that and see that those trends improve. The other thing I had to share was we have one, one of the things that often will bring our ELA or reading scores down is the writing. And those things. And we've had Vanessa Hayes is one of our literacy specialists that focuses a lot on the writing. And has seen great success in the counties that she worked with this past year on the writing. And the impact that it's making in third, fourth, and fifth grade. And so, we've partnered with Mountain State Educational Services Collaborative to offer a year-long virtual writing training. With cohorts of our ELA teachers to really start them focusing on the different forms of writing. It'll be in a PLC format with live sessions that they can attend. Classroom instructional videos and then collaborative instruction to kind of replicate what she's done in those other states. And so, we'll be kicking that off August the 5th. And so, we're hoping that we'll have counties across the state see some of the gains that we know those few schools that she worked with this year piloted as we move forward. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Next item is board member updates and requests for information. We'll start with Mr. Wooton.
Madam President, I have two grandkids that are playing Little League, Little League All-Stars going on. As most of you, I'm sure know. And before every game, they have to recite the Little League pledge. And I think given where we find ourselves at this red hot moment with vaccination laws and constitutional challenges to our ability to even operate. It's instructive what they say before a game. "I trust in God, I love my country, and will respect its laws. I will play fair and strive to win, but win or lose, I will always do my best." I feel like this board's doing that. I hope we continue to be Little Leaguers in that regard. But be prepared to play like a big Leaguer so we can get some of these matters resolved. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Stansberry.
Well said, Mr. Wooton. Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan.
I did several things, but the one that was most impactful to me was I was invited to the Summer Policy Summit. That was sponsored by the West Virginia Center on Budget and Policy. And co-sponsored by the American Friends Society. And at the institute, about 50 people from all over the state came. They were college-age, graduate students, adults of all ages. It was quite a group. And they worked in small groups of four or five people each. And they were looking at education. That was their topic. And their role was to come up with policies that might be implemented in the state. And just to hear their idea, and then they had, I was there to hear them present. And it was remarkable to see the ideas they had, the intelligence that they approached things with, their data interest. It was uplifting, it was energizing. And we need to be encouraging that kind of activity among others in the state. It was really remarkable.
Thank you. Mr. Ruck.
On behalf of the superintendent, yesterday I attended a West Virginia Nuclear Policy Retreat for nine hours. And it was fascinating. You wouldn't think of it, West Virginia lifted the prohibition on using nuclear energy as a way of generating electricity here a few years ago. There is a real opportunity for West Virginia to play a role. Nuclear is going to have a big opportunity in the future. It's really not only small nuclear actors, but otherwise. And there's an opportunity for West Virginia to play in that supply chain. And of course, a lot of it focused on workforce, workforce development, the needs to get out there to talk to kids early. To get them excited about all these career opportunities that a lot of times we don't think about. So thanks for sending me.
Mr. Hardesty?
Nothing at this time.
Mrs. Justice.
This is pretty simple, that kind of like Greg. And I heard an upcoming second grader read a book to me yesterday. And it was so, he was, if you could just see the beam coming out of his smile from reading and stuff. He was so proud in that he, you know, goes to every word and, you know, when he doesn't know it, sounds it out and everything. But just the knowledge, it's just like a sponge soaking up everything. And I'm just really proud of him and his teacher and his school. And it's, they've got a lot of good stuff going on.
Thank you. Mr. Dunlevy?
Other than our discussion earlier with the SSAC new directors and so forth, I spent about four or five hours with them yesterday. But I'm excited, new staff and everything else, so I have nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Gabriel.
I visited Simpson Elementary School in Harrison County with a group of teachers and the principal and some other people. And I just want to say it's really exciting to see a school coming up out of the ground. Very exciting.
Thank you very much. I don't think I have anything to add, so we'll move on to future meetings. A special meeting of the West Virginia Board of Education is scheduled for July 14th, 2025 at noon. And the next regular meeting is scheduled for August 13th, 2025. And both meetings will be held in Charleston. And the next item is the election of board officers. And before we begin with nominations, I want to say a few words if I could. After deep reflection and heartfelt gratitude, I've decided not to seek reelection as president of the West Virginia Board of Education. It's been one of my greatest honors of my professional life to serve this esteemed institution. And to work alongside such dedicated educators, leaders, and public servants. During my tenure, I have witnessed firsthand the unwavering commitment to excellence in education across our great state. I'm proud of the progress we've made together, advancing policies that prioritize achievement, supporting our administrators, teachers, and service personnel. And strengthening the foundation of public education in West Virginia. I remain confident in the board's continued leadership and its vision for the future. And I am thankful for the trust you placed in me. And will always carry deep respect for the mission and people of this organization. So, with that being said, I would like to recommend that Mr. Paul Hardesty be elected as president. And Mr. Dunlevy, you'll read the rest of the slate of officers if you will. Blocking, I'm sorry.
I recommend that Ms. Gabriel be elected as vice president, Mr. Rocheck be elected as secretary, and Mrs. White be elected as finance officer.
Are there any other recommendations from the board? And all in go.
I have no other, but I do want to make a comment, Nancy. Is now the appropriate time to do it? Thank you. We've worked together these several years and I've always appreciated your attitude, your positivity, your knowledge. You know, you are an expert on school finance and I wish we could clone you and put you in 55 counties. But, you know, you just, you have a kind way about you and it's impactful. So, thank you, thank you. I know it's not an easy thing to be the president, so thank you for doing so.
Your turn.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I too want to thank you for your service and dedication to this group. And I would also move that the nominations be closed and that you call the question.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye.